I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Tracy Hannah-Locke Everett.
Here.
Kenya Gadston.
Here.
Christine Gabel.
Deli.
Frank Borna.
Excused.
Jose Muniz.
Excused.
Georgia Patchen.
Here.
Anthony White.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Walkley, do you review the fire exits?
They are directly in front of us in the back of the room.
I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence for Mrs. Joyce Elaine Taylor, retired music teacher with the Beacon City School District. Thank you. We have a motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual.
Certainly. Comments or questions?
Lock is going to be speaking about Albany. She spent a day there this past week, so...
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before I talk about some of the updates that I learned when I was in Albany, I would like to speak a little bit about the wonderful Saturday experience at the DIA, where we had several of our high school students playing musical instruments, singing, working with the art students, and drawing beautiful artwork, which was on the floor of the Richard Sienna exhibit. And it was a very sensory, experiential experience and a collaborative effort as a result of eight months of work with our art teachers, music teachers, and representatives of the DIA collaborating together. It was really special, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. It lasted about an hour on Saturday from 11 until 12. There was a great deal of community people at the event. And as I was walking towards it, you know, the DIA is really quite large, and I wanted to find where the Beacon students were, and I asked which way to go. I'm not that familiar with the DIA yet. I've been there a couple of times. And then all of a sudden, I heard this music, this music that was just so inspirational, beckoning me to this location. I was really amazed when I went downstairs. I saw all of these people, students and adults, on the floor drawing inspirationally as they were listening to this music. And if you've not seen the exhibit, his work, he's got these very large structures that are in the shape of, you know, almost like you're going into a small cave. So the echo sound is really just amazing. And when I got there, and Claudine Farley, the art coordinator, gave me a mini tour, and we walked into the structures where the students were. The sound was just amazing, and they were so into the work. It was just a very, very pleasurable experience and a very project-oriented type of learning for these students. So what we hope to do is have Claudine Farley, our art coordinator, Megan Mattingly, who is our representative at the DIA, come to a board meeting to kind of explain in a bit more detail just exactly what the experience was like. And Mike Gersh, one of the teachers, also filmed that, and he'll be working with some students to, you know, perfect the film of that video. And then we'll show a little bit of a snippet for it, so then you can hear it and see it. It'll really amaze you. It was really very, very extraordinary, I thought. So I want to thank the work of those teachers, and that was over the last eight months. Just a beautiful, beautiful job. What I wanted to do is, when I was up in Albany last week, I participated in what we call the DTSD. It's really the Diagnostic Tool for School District Effectiveness, and it's their training program. This is the fourth year that the state has invested in this work. And I have to say that that work has evolved in those four years, and they've learned a lot as a result as well, the members of the State Education Department that are involved in this effort. So you see the sort of the logo that's being used. These circles represent various tenants that help to guide our self-reflections and the kind of work that we're doing in school setting. And it's through this tool that we help to set our plans and create our district plan and our school plans. So the first, of course, is the district leadership and capacity. That would be what they consider tenant one. The green circle is school leadership practices and decisions, and that would be their tenant two. And then, of course, we go into curriculum development and support. That would be tenant three. And within each of these tenants, they have various statements of practice that speak a little bit more intricately about the kind of work that we're looking at when we say what curriculum development is. Tenant four would be teacher practices and support. Five would be student social and emotional developmental health. And then lastly, our family and community engagement. So this is really all-encompassing of what an entire, you know, school district needs to look at. So the process itself, so here, these were some of the latest learnings that we experienced. So what they're looking at now is they're trying to focus more on the difference between evidence of effort and evidence of impact, meaning that, that's not to say that schools aren't working hard. Absolutely, they are. But what we're trying to do now through this process is to look at, but what, but why? But what difference does it make? What is the impact for this work that we're actually doing? How is it improving instruction? How is it improving student achievement? So going deeper. The reviews now and coming this year, and this year, we will be doing our district-led review, so it'll be an internal process for the Beacon City Schools, for the district level, as well as for the high school. But what the state is saying, even in the internal process, the state is wanting to work with the schools, not to the schools. There's been a feeling, I think, in the past, and I believe that's why the work has evolved from various constituents across the state, that, you know, that there wasn't as much of a partnership. And the state people are saying, "We really want to support this work," so they want to make it more of a partnership. So they're increasing those supports that can lead to school improvements. The focus, as we look at this work, is on the why. We're looking more deeply, a root cause analysis and a needs assessment. And so when a district is engaged in this work and they go through a self-reflection, the self-evaluation has become much more of a self-reflection, and they even developed a new tool that we're going to be using. We just saw it last week for the first time. So they're making it more of a developmental process. So in the past, when districts took a look at this and they were, you know, measuring their progress along each of those tenants I explained, and the various statements of practice, they would rate, like a Hedy scale, are they highly effective in this particular tenant? Are they effective? Are they developing? What the state is doing now with our self-reflection is going to be, it's more of a developmental process, so the ratings have more, have changed more to, or evolved, I should say, to stages four through one. So it's along a continuum, and I'll show that in just a second. The goal being that it's not about getting the highest ratings possible. It's about uncovering the rationale, the why, schools are getting the results they're getting, whether they're good results or they need to be improved. So if you look at the scale, it's really along a continuum. It's growth that they're looking for, not, you know, just straight, you know, ratings of effective. So if you look down here, here's the stage one, and here's the stage four. But it's really along this continuum, so that it's evolving across a period of growth or the thinking of growth along this continuum. So it's much more developmental and focused. So some of the updates that we learned. In February 2016, there will be the creation of the new list for focus school districts based on the 2014-15 data. Those that are on the focus list now, any of those schools, that information, those lists will sunset. Some schools may remain on the list depending on new data, but that's their timeframe. The receivership, that has been a topic that has come into a lot of discussion across the state. And what the state is saying, that if a school is newly designated as a priority school this year, they would need to be in this category for three years, for 2015-16, for 2016-17, and 2017-18, before being placed in a receivership. So they would need to get to a priority school status, and then it would be years in that same status before they would be called to a receivership by 2018-19, really. For this year only, the state is saying that if schools have not met or did not meet their 95, or do not meet their 95 percent participation rate, but all other categories are met, the school has an opportunity to still come off the focus list. They've also tried to suggest an element of fairness, realizing that there was a large refusal rate across the state for, you know, not sitting for these state tests, three through eight, that they will look at two years' worth of data in particular subgroups. So if we have a subgroup of English language learners, for example, and less than 30 students participated, then they would go and they would not only look at the 2014-15 data, but they would go to 2013-14, so that there would be an element of fairness in that. So they're trying to do everything they can to be fair and to listen to what the feedback is out there. So the big picture items that I took away were that they are reviewing, and many people know that there is a task force out now, in effect, right now at the state level, looking at the standards. They're looking at the assessments, the state assessments, three through eight. So they have a new vendor, so it's no longer going to be Pearson. They will be making the tests shorter, which I think is a huge response to what they've been hearing, the feedback they've been hearing. They will be releasing all the test items. Up until now, it's been much more of a secretive process, and then they started releasing only 50 percent of the questions. They will now be releasing all of the test items, so that teachers can use this information to help inform their instruction. They are looking for volunteers to pilot an online platform, and they are looking while increasing their teacher role. So they're, you know, wanting to get more teacher and using more teacher input. And they are looking to adapt the assessments for our students with disabilities and possibly our English language learners. So this is newly from last week. There weren't much specifics around any of this information, but these are the big-ticket items that they're looking at. We are very, we feel very fortunate that the Beacon High School is a focus school. We've been accepted into a professional learning community, a PLC program, at the state level, where we have an opportunity to go to Albany and work with other schools and to deepen our collaboration. Our first visit is going to be next October 19, and we're hoping that we'll have some more clarity around some of these big-picture items when we visit then. They're looking at revising the APPR, as many people have heard, but they're trying to use more of a growth model. They're reviewing the APPR and trying to see it as a growth model. They are trying to be fairer with teachers that have lower-performing students. So if you have a teacher that is in a self-contained special education class, they're looking at how that they can have the APPR be more fair about that. And they're also looking at the opt-out movement and possibly changing some of the rules. So again, these are the big-ticket takeaways, not many specifics around it yet, but stay tuned. I hope we will find some more information on that. So that's it. Those were the highlights from, we did a lot of, you know, nitty-gritty kind of work as well, but those were some of the highlights that I wanted to share without getting too much into the weeds, so to speak.
Any questions? Yes.
First, I just had a comment. I'm happy to hear that they're going to be releasing the test items. I think that'll be beneficial.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I had two questions. You talked about them mentioning the opt-out rules. Do they give a sign as to when they're going to change the rules and when they're going to release that?
No, no, no real specific information around that, but we're hoping that, you know, maybe we'll have some new information when we go up there in a couple of weeks. So people are, you know, are asking, but again, it was very big-picture broad, and I think they're still figuring some of that out.
The other question I had is, you mentioned on one of the slides that for this year only, schools that didn't meet the 95 percent participation rate but met all the other criteria would be removed from the list. So two questions. One, does that mean this year as in?
Yes.
This year we're in, or the year that just passed?
The year that, those that are on the list now, for the year that just passed, they, you know, they are considering that because of the big opt-out rating.
So I just want to clarify, they're considering it or they're doing it?
No, they said that they would be open, that they're not going to penalize districts.
So then, if you meet the other criteria but not the participation rate, you are?
You would not, the participation rate alone would not keep you on the list.
So what does that mean for Beacon?
We'll have to see. We'll have to see when we get more information about where we stand in that category.
So we don't have the information back about whether we met the other criteria? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
I can clarify that, too. When I go back up there, I'll clarify that, because it sounded like, I know where you feel.
Because when I read it, I said, "Oh, that's great." But then, now that I'm asking you, it doesn't seem like...
I know. It seems like it's a little bit iffy if it's this year or whether it's next year. Next year, the 2014-15 data, yeah. Yeah. I will double-check that when I get up to the state next week or the week after next. Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Barbara and I were looking at that earlier, too, and we said that seemed a little funny. So we'll definitely get clarity on that.
On slide three, you said something about the review being done with schools, not to schools, but you said there would be an interim review. Is that, like, who decides who's on that interim review team? Is it a team that the school decides, or is it a team that, like, the state dictates who's on it?
The state has some rules around that. In order for, you would need an outside educational expert to kind of guide the internal processes, a district-led review. In the past, we've got out, other districts, too, will go out and they'll hire an outside educational expert. What we are hoping to do and planning to do for this year, since it is an internal process, I've applied to get certification to run the district reviews, to run the school reviews. I'm also working, as part of my training last week, will continue as a lead credential. So they have two scales, certification in one way, but a lead credential in another. So all of the trainings that I'm going on for a lead credential will give me the opportunity to lead the district review. And then there'll be other constituents and other stakeholders that will be involved in that process.
Could BoC be one of the outside people?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we've used, well, BoC's, yes, but from the RSE task. Bob England, for example, was a gentleman that we've, that's been on our committees. And he was at the high school review last year.
And you said that they're...
As a CSIS.
You said that they're doing away with Pearson. Did they think about using teachers to develop the test, or are they going with another company?
New vendor. That's all they said, new vendor, Anthony. So that's a good question, and we'll see what we can find out next time we get up there.
I think we have 84 people in the room. I just had a question on...
I agree with you. We probably do have 84 people in the room. The only option that we have in order to move this to the other location is for the Beacon players to not be able to practice for their play. So that's the choice we have right now. So I know we are a couple over. I just counted heads myself. But I know that it's very important that our Beacon players have the opportunity to have their rehearsal, so...
What do we end up, like, shut down a mobile technology as well?
Well, it wouldn't even be that. I mean, they're knee-deep in their rehearsal right now. So Mike, your thoughts on that? We are over capacity right now.
What's the capacity?
Capacity's 80.
Is there another space besides this or the other room?
No. Well, the cafeteria, but that wouldn't make...
Right.
We wouldn't have any audio. There wouldn't be anything. And besides the fact that the seating is, you know, not conducive to this type of a meeting.
Keep going.
Okay. Go ahead, Kenya.
I just had a question on page two, focus on the why. If there's going to be data kept on the process, a root cause analysis and a needs assessment, who does it? Does the district do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's quite a, it's a new self-reflection format. It's, you know, about, I would say, maybe a 15 or so-page document, and that's done through the team, the school team or the district team.
And that's the same with the goal along a continuum, right?
Absolutely. That's part of the reflection form, absolutely. Which was really a nice, a nice change, we all thought, those of us that were up there. And they were in full capacity at these meetings last week, I have to say. And it's just a more user-friendly process, a more reflective process, and it's about growth, not, it's much less punitive than we've seen in the past.
I had one other question on your last page, the big picture. Did they go into any detail? And the public say no, because it seems like the trend is that they're not going into detail. But with regard to adapting the assessments for students with disabilities and English as a new language students, did they give any thoughts on how they were planning to do that?
No, they did not. They did not. They did say about, the reason I said possibly for the English language learners is there's conversation already happening at the federal level on that, on what assessments they would be given, but they did not go into specifics, especially for the students with disabilities. I hope we'll have some more information when we go up there in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Sure. So it's really, a lot of this is, you know, very, very new information, kind of this just in, and I think it shows an effort on the part of the State Education Department to really, really work more in tandem with all of the stakeholders in the state and working with the schools.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have our students and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public. We'll have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments. We'll have the consent agenda. We do have an addendum to the consent agenda. And then we will not be using a second executive session. We will then adjourn the meeting. There are a couple corrections on the non-instructional personnel list. Page two, item E2, the employee thing. E2, that employee was listed with a salary of $23,000. His actual salary will be upgraded, but from the amount of $23,999. Okay. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups?
Hi, my name is Meredith Hewer, Chair of the Beacon Education Foundation. I just wanted to give a quick update about how the year has gone so far after the letter that I wrote, or that I wrote on the why. I've met with all of the principals at this point, and I want to thank them very much for their cooperation, and Karen, who had to arrange this. I think that we all have a plan of working together. We're currently finding a point person from every school, either a teacher or a BTA member, who will be the arts and arts coordinator for that school and will help to coordinate getting our contracts through BoC. And with just a very small amount of digging, we've already found enough programs that have been going on in districts for years that will now go through BoC's co-sign, and we will more than double our contracts. So thank you very much for your work.
Okay, open to the public. Mrs. Gadston's going to read our policy.
The Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings, not to exceed 60 minutes. All speakers and meeting attendees are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libiais, libiais, my God, today, just one libiais, libiais, statements, sorry, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice, as well as disruptive conduct, including calling out, will not be tolerated. Speakers may generally comment on any matter relating to district business. The president and/or the superintendent may respond to comments when all speakers have finished. There shall be no further public comment or dialogue regarding the responses provided by the president and/or superintendent. The rules applicable to such public comment are set forth in Board Policy 1230, a copy of which is available in the sign-up book at the front of this room and on the district's website. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Good evening. My name is John Burns. I'm the president of Beacon Teachers Association. Much has been made about this topic, and the statement I'm about to read was unanimously approved by the BTA Representative Assembly at our October 6 meeting. Dr. Walkley, the BTA is both disappointed and disheartened by the recent spring 2015 transfers of numerous members of our unit. Your blatant disregard for process leaves us little choice but to make known to you both our displeasure for your decision and how we could possibly work more collaboratively in the future. While we recognize your ultimate authority to make these decisions, we also recognize that decisions are usually arrived at through consultation and input from several different sources. The following aspects of your decision-making are extremely troublesome to the BTA. One, contractual provision. There was a total disregard for the contractual provision of Article 14, Section B regarding the transfer process. Two, the midnight date of the transfers. This leads us to believe that you intentionally wanted to subjugate the process so that teachers would have less time to appeal the decision. Three, a lack of administrative input. In several cases, the transfers are carried out in direct contrast to what was being recommended by the building principals. This shows a total lack of respect for the professionals who run these buildings on a daily basis. Four, a lack of professional notification. No one should ever find out through a mass email that they have been transferred. It shows a total lack of respect for individuals and their privacy. Individual meetings should always be held with face-to-face contact and a reasonable explanation for why the person's being transferred. Not everyone can be wonderful and an asset to the building they are being transferred to. Five, the number of transfers. There were over 20 involuntary transfers in a district that has shown progress over the last five years. The upheaval caused by this mass movement is never a good administrative decision and is particularly difficult to understand at this juncture in time. The following suggestions would make for a more professional transition in the future if transfers are actually needed. One, address the issues regarding lack of performance with the individual professionals rather than simply transferring them to some other building. Two, treat the process with respect. Meet with individuals in private and explain the reasons for and the goals involved with making these transfers. As professionals, we deserve this respect. Three, collaborate with rather than dictate to your building administrators. The building administrators have a great pulse on what is going on in their buildings. Utilize their expertise and involve coordinators in the process. And four, have a plan in place before the absolute last minute for contractual adherence. Professionals should not have to be sitting on the edge of their seat waiting to see if the axe will fall on them. The negative fallout from the decision about transfers this past spring will be felt for years to come. After only your first year as the superintendent, many staff members have come to not trust you as a result of this rash and authoritarian decision. In your remarks over the past few superintendent's meetings, you have continually emphasized a culture of care and respect. You hold everyone to this standard, but obviously believe that it does not apply to you. If anything, you have shown a total disregard for how professionals should be treated in the workplace. If your goal is to get us off of any list that we may presently be on, you may find it more successful to treat us as partners rather than adversaries. Drawing on our sense of professionalism and our sense of vocation will make all of our jobs much easier and rewarding. Instead of building bridges, you've chosen to build barriers.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
In these difficult educational times, we teachers-
I'm sorry, but that violates the policy as well.
In these difficult educational times, we teachers have more than enough challenges. Please do not add our relationship with the superintendent to this list.
Mr. Adwell?
Good evening. My name is Bob Adwell, and I've been a resident of Beacon for about forty years and a U2 graduate of Beacon High School. I'm a twenty-seven-year veteran math teacher, coach, advisor, mentor, who's been a model employee during my time at Beacon. But tonight I'm here as a taxpayer and parent of children in the district. I have an honor to have had the opportunity to have taught many of your children. Melissa, at the board meeting on September twenty-eighth, you gavelled me about talking about a situation that occurred. You stated that people were not to talk about kids or staff in the district. There are at least two people who spoke before me, and too many to count prior meetings, have talked about even named students and employees of the district. Why am I being discriminated against? After twenty-seven years in the district, why am I the persona non grata? This is because in the beginning of summer, I broke forth a vote to the district. An investigation followed, an investigation that I've yet to receive response to. Dr. Walkley followed with this letter from her attorney, which is littered with lies threatening to sue not only me, but another Board of Education member, using as witnesses members of the Beacon School Board, the school's attorney, and other Beacon City School District employees. Rather than discuss the situation, I want to know, and I would just like to ask the following questions. What are the procedures that are to be followed when students move within a district? Why would the superintendent override the deputy superintendent and attorney and move a student without the parent residence approval? Isn't it even legal for the superintendent to override a board-approved district residency official's decision on school placement? Why would the superintendent not recuse herself from making a decision based upon her close personal friendship with one of the people involved? Thank you.
Mr. Adwell, I'd like to address that now rather than wait until the end of the comments. It was evident, when I did not allow you to continue to speak, that there had been parents that had mentioned their children prior to your speaking that night. Those parents talked about the class that their child was in and a book that was not available to their child. What you intended to speak about was very private in nature to your child. Again, it was your child, but it was his privacy.
You don't know that. You didn't give me a chance to say that, Ms. Melissa. You had no idea what was on the paper in front of me, and you did not give me a chance.
I don't-
You did not give me a chance to speak, okay? All I asked for was a chance to speak. You have no idea what was on that paper, Melissa. No idea. And you shut me down. You've allowed people to grandstand in front of the Board of Education, to turn their backs and speak, to say whatever they want in front of the Board of Education in terms of bringing up other students' names, okay? Names that are-
Both.
You have no idea what I was going to say.
But what I would like to say is, you're right. There have been times where I've let people speak, I've let people inappropriately speak to the board or to the public. You're absolutely correct. And there's been times that I have been called on that for not following policy, because none of us know every single policy inside and out, whether I sit in this chair or any other chair in this room. You're right, I have been faulted, and I've been called out on it, and I will take ownership for it. But there is one thing that this Board of Education has asked me to do a better job of, and that is to ensure that policy is followed to the best that it can be and that speakers show great respect and that we do not single out any person, and we do not single out any child, and we do not single out any staff member. And it's very difficult to do from this chair. It's incredibly difficult, and I've made that clear to everybody. And when we talk right now-
You're single out right now, because this isn't following policy.
Absolutely.
You're right, but I think it's very important that we just- Okay, then, Ms. Adwell, we can wait until the end of the comment period, and then there won't be any further opportunity to speak. Thank you. Ms. Underweiger. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce your name right.
It's hard for me to go on to another subject right now. But I'll try for a minute. This, what I wanted to say has to do with the refusal policy that's spoken about earlier tonight, sometimes called the opt-out policy or whatever, which seems to be on a lot of people's minds. Currently, there are two actions by superintendents and by school boards taking place that reflect a growing awareness around the state that there is a problem with the current standardized testing policy. The first action by the New York State Council of School Superintendents involves sending a letter signed by over three-hundred-and-fifty superintendents, and the letter went to all New York congressional representatives. Among other things, the superintendents demanded more local control over the curriculum, state control over how accountability works, a reduction in federally mandated testing, and there was lots more in it. And I've been posted on Facebook since everybody reads Facebook. Anyway, it was a very strong statement that they signed. And in the Hudson Valley alone, it was signed by sixty-six school superintendents. So I was very surprised that I could not find Dr. Walkley's signature among them. I wrote to her to ask why, over a week ago, I think. Was it because she's not a member of that organization? Or does she disagree with the letter? Anyway, I never received her reply. The second action that's going on is this weekend, no, this next weekend, toward the end of it. The New York State School Boards Association is having a convention. And most of the resolutions before the group deal with funding, with state legislation concerning education, and with standardized testing. And I read through all the resolutions. And first, I'm wondering if our representative, Mrs. Off, is going to be there? And if so, I'm wondering what the procedure is for voting on the resolutions. My understanding is that if you're speaking for the school board, that there should be open discussion about this and voting in front of everybody in the BOE as to what our positions are. Anyway, this is what I've heard, and I'm willing to be corrected on it. Anyway, I haven't heard any discussion on it. Hopefully, at the next board meeting, we'll get a report on what happened at the meeting, because I'd be very interested. And I think it would be very educational for the community to understand what this organization does since we pay dues to it. The last thing I hope gets addressed at some point is what our policy is going to be concerning refusals this year. I think it backfired last year, and we ended up having more middle school kids opting out than they might have, than their parents might have let them do. I would also hope tonight to hear back from Ms. Giselle and from Dr. Walkley on my questions. Thank you.
Meredith Hewer?
I want to start with Carrie like my mom's. On Saturday, I attended Community Free Day at Dia Beacon. Mrs. Calloway was there as well. This was an especially amazing one, because part of the program included around thirty Beacon High School students that had been working together with art and music teachers and in what was really this collaborative experience. For those of you who haven't been to Dia, there's this room filled with steel ellipses that are twenty feet high. And students are playing their brass instruments and singing inside of the ellipses, and then the rest of the community that was there was drawing improvisationally to the music. And it was really, really incredible, and everyone was really genuinely moved by the experience. Later, a few Beacon High students joined one of Dia's teaching artists and participated in experimental scoring in some of the other galleries. Here, participants would draw a musical score with shakes and lines inspired by the artwork, and then the BCSD students played the score. It was really inspiring to see these kids be so brave and composed while working without a script. I couldn't help but think how this experience might help them in the future during a difficult job interview or anywhere where they might be forced to trust themselves and think on the spot. These kinds of skills are a big part of what our children learn during art and music. We are so lucky to have Dia in our community. But I wonder if there's more that the BCSD could be doing to help our kids in the same way, given the community that Beacon has become and disappointed that eighth graders do not currently receive any upper education. In my opinion, this speaks to a larger problem with the way this district is approaching the education of our children. I've watched quite a large sum of money be approved by this board this summer through instructional support teachers and consultants, much of it under the category of professional development. I have heard that we pay a consultant nine hundred dollars a day to help with scheduling, and yet I hear that there are thirty-two students in one honors English class where not every student has a desk, and twelve students in another. I have also heard that a music class had to be renamed after the semester started because the teacher did not have the appropriate supplies to teach the class as it had originally been described. Meanwhile, some elementary schools have their own full-time library and media teachers, while others have to share with another school, and this goes for art as well. I feel like many members of this community continue to question the way this money is being spent and continue to be told that it's because we are a focus district and we have very few choices. But recently, I learned of a district not far from here that got off the focus list, not by throwing consultants at the problem, but by figuring out how to support their students more and by enlarging their community and supporting their teachers. If our teachers are stretched too thin, teaching too many classes to classes that are bigger than they need to be, then no amount of professional development can help. In the district I mentioned earlier, elementary students have gym and special every day. This must have been some kind of heroic scheduling feat, but as far as I know, it was not done by an outside consultant. There are some differences between their district and ours, but there are also many similarities, and I'm quite uncertain that there's a lot we can learn from their experience. One thing that has been proven over and over is that the success of a school district is almost always reflected in the amount of money spent per student, and the CSD is consistently toward the very bottom of this list in our area. I used to assume that this was because we are a poor district, but I'm beginning to wonder if it's because too much of our money is being eaten up by unnecessary expenditures. And I had one specific question for Dr. Walkley. I didn't understand the story of the band teacher being removed from the elementary school. I'd love to know if you could walk me through that process. Thank you.
Ms. Mark?
Hi, good evening. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item Ten Point Zero Seven. It's on page five-six of the agenda, and it's the Public Complaints Policy. At the last board meeting, the board decided to send the public speaking at board meetings policy back to the committee. And I really appreciated the discussion that you had, which was very productive and very lively, and about the writing versus implementation of policy. Since Policy fourteen hundred is currently copied inside 1230, I don't think the board should vote on fourteen hundred tonight. By the way, you didn't even read fourteen hundred last time, as far as I know. I think that we will end up with two conflicting versions of fourteen hundred that are both part of the policy manual, and I don't know how you're going to implement that. Furthermore, I also suggest that you revisit fourteen hundred to address an issue that has been coming up a lot recently, which is complaints against the superintendent. It is not fleshed out at all currently in the public complaint policy, and I think that, as we have seen already tonight, they present their own set of implementation hurdles. And they should be fleshed out. Based on the last few things that have happened here in the past where the public speaks and then there is a vote, and I can't tell what the board members are thinking, I would like to ask the board members that disagree with my suggestion and would like to approve fourteen hundred tonight, to tell the public why they are choosing to do so. We come to the meetings so we can communicate with you and you can represent us. At the city council meetings, I see every council member speaking every time and sharing what they're doing and which constituents contacted them. But here on the board, I see some people sitting quietly every night and then going to their councilperson to complain that we are too negative. So why are you not talking to us? You're right here. You have the board comments, and we want to hear what you're thinking.
Ms. Ali?
Now Thursday's this time? Down, one run. I would like to address Dr. Walkley and the board tonight, because it has come to my attention that there are critical needs in this district that are either being delayed or are not being properly addressed. Textbooks for the Duchess Community College, DCC, classes at the high school were received three weeks late this year, this school year. AP History classes at the high school currently have no books. Where are the books for these classes? The AP Biology book is not in compliance because it is so old. Where are the new books for this class? In the computer graphics art class at the high school, it is my understanding that the district never paid the trademark for the program, so the class is forced to go without it. Why is this? I'm told that the financial math teacher took the initiative to design the class and curriculum, yet the code from the central office is not returned, so this class continues to go without books. It is my understanding that this is a self-contained class for students with disabilities. I'm told that two students in wheelchairs were pulled from their adaptive phys ed classes for five weeks and were doing independent study instead. Why were these students being denied services? I'm assuming this is not in compliance with our IP's. The literacy program at the middle school also does not have enough books for the take-home portion, for the independent reading that they do at night. I am also told that teaching assistants are being removed from their classrooms to sub, because I think this district pays a little bit lower than some of the other districts pay subs a little bit lower, so I don't know if that's why we don't have enough subs. But I'm told that teaching assistants are being pulled from their rooms to sub when we don't have the subs that we need. And that children who are required to have one-to-one aides on their IP's, some of them do not have those aides, and so I'm just wondering why that is. And just overall, I'm just curious. I just, I don't understand what's happening at the district office that is interfering with the progress of our children and teachers. Where is your time being spent, Dr. Walkley, if it is not to run this district on a day-to-day basis? If it is not to ensure that the- I read it like ten times and I still, I still don't really have a sense of what the TOSSAs' responsibilities are, the specific day-to-day responsibilities. The brochure does list what they collectively do, so I'll just share with you some of the responsibilities. They chair CPSD and CPE meetings, they support AIS programs, they collaboratively work with teachers, they co-teach strategies, and they utilize an instructional assessment process when appropriate. That's in the brochure. So I'm curious, do all four newly appointed TOSSAs do all of these things? Does the TOSA who one-third of the teachers in the school district voted, had recalled his union president, who is partially responsible for the BOSH APR a few years ago, he'll lay over one hundred ineffective ratings for teachers in this district to collaborate with and evaluate those teachers? Does that TOSA whose background is a phys ed teacher model and co-teach learning strategies to math and English teachers?
Thank you, Ms. Ali.
So why is this? What am I missing? Thank you.
Do I give it to you?
I wanted to take home at first to thank the teachers, building administrators, and support staff of the Beacon City School District who have gotten off to a great start this year taking care of our children in spite of scheduling difficulties, missing textbooks, and no support from their district leadership. I stood here at a school board meeting on September fifteenth and I asked you, Dr. Walkley, why you chose to do a group of concerns and inform parents who want to help this district as a threat? Not surprisingly, I didn't receive an answer to that question. So I went home and I thought about my own role in all of this. I took a look at my own actions to see what I can change in myself to improve our chances of actually helping this district, which by the way is something that I highly recommend you have a try. I came to the next meeting on September twenty-eighth ready to try out a new tactic. I was less adversarial and even thanked you for scheduling more of your forums, even though your intentions for them were unclear and you didn't seem to let anyone outside of that meeting know that they exist. Of course, that didn't work either and my question still went unanswered. We've been spinning our wheels for months now and it's become clear that you have no intention of working with us or taking our opinions into account. You spent this summer researching and advocating and you have spent ignoring our questions and defending your TOSSAs, which doesn't sound any better when you call them instructional support. You have made cuts of foreign language and music while you continue trying to fill an HR position and hiring consultants to do things like help with scheduling, which by the way yielded excellent results such as thirty-two kids in a first-period honors English class while the eighth-period one has twelve. I listened to friends of mine tell me about their third graders in other districts learning to write code on district iPads and programming robots that they build with Legos and I can only wonder how many friends you're planning to hire with Beacon's $2.1 million technology grants. You sit up there suggesting that parents do your research and saying things like you weren't aware three weeks into the school year that the AP history class didn't have the proper books and if you're not making mistakes, you're asleep. I'm here tonight to tell you that that is completely unacceptable. Since you won't give us an honest answer to most of our questions, I can only assume that you have been too distracted dealing with the elephant that you keep performing to do the actual job that we're paying you for. Our community deserves better. Our children deserve better. Our teachers deserve better. And I am done asking questions that don't get answered. I have come here to tell you that it is time to step up and do what's right for this district, even if it means stepping down and making room for someone who can. Thank you.
Kristin Flynn.
I have two questions tonight. One is a new question and the other is a follow-up that went unanswered. The first question is, are the forums, the schedule for which was distributed at the last board of education meeting for this --
Sorry, I'm being --
I'm so sorry. Siri is going to be involved. I apologize.
Siri was talking to her.
Yeah, sorry. Um, okay. A new question and a new question. The new question is about the forums. Are they, we received a schedule from, at the last meeting. It said about finding ways to communicate better together. I think we, a group of parents were developing a list of just ways to communicate better. We don't necessarily need to have the forum for that, but are the forums for the purpose of collaborating on the DESIP, the district improvement plan, which is required for focus districts? Okay, sorry. And then my, and is, will the forums be listed, communicated more broadly than the paper that we received? Will they be on the calendar? Will an agenda, will there be different purposes for each one or is there just kind of an opportunity to check? And then my follow-up question, which was asked in August, was when the former VTA president did their internship for their admin degree at the district office, what measures were put into place to handle this conflict of interest in order to protect the teachers' negotiating power? And why was the board, in their oversight capacity, not made aware of this arrangement in advance?
Carla Springer.
Carla Springer, parent and taxpayer. We want the children in this district to go out of this school with the tools so that they can go out and be a success. So we can't, we can't just overlook things when they're not right. I recently watched a video at the board meeting when Dr. Walkley was given the new position and what I don't understand is you have each other, you ask questions and sometimes they don't get answered. So at that meeting, one of the board members asked why you weren't following the protocol that you normally follow when you hire a superintendent. And every one of you, except for one person, asked that question, ah, didn't ask that question, didn't care that the policy, the normal procedures for hiring someone were not followed. Only one of you. So my question is to all of you, why did you choose to avoid the normal procedure for hiring a superintendent? I'd like answers from all of you, if that's at all possible at this meeting. And I'd like to remind the public that this board represents us. If they don't, they should be voted out. We are all here. We should get some new people on the board that might follow our own objectives. Note that we're watching and we care that the good people stay and those who don't care about our children in this district should just leave. Thank you.
Deborah DeBibbets.
Good evening. I'd like to start by expressing how very thankful I am to all of the teachers at Rombout Middle School who have helped make, who have made the transition for my son from Mrs. Condelo's amazing glenum to middle school, which I was very nervous about, as was he. I receive emails on a weekly basis from his teachers that they send to all of their students telling me what they're working on in class, what tests are coming up. I feel fully informed and very grateful for all of the hard work that our teachers are doing at Rombout. I'm also here to talk briefly about the Fishville waterfront project. I know all of you know about the large property. I think it's up to sixty-four acres now, sixty-five acres that the Jehovah's Witnesses have purchased, which will seriously impact the tax base that the school district has. I received a flyer in the mail from Tony Sperone, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it, who's running for county, uh, thank you, county sixteen. And he dedicated a whole page to this issue. What I'd like to bring to your attention and to the public's attention is that there's a task force that's been created by the neighbors of this property. They're having a meeting this Thursday at seven PM at Overlook Point Clubhouse. I made some copies here for anyone who would like. Given the tax, the tax cap that we have every year, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can only raise taxpayers' taxes so much and I can't imagine that that will make up for what we're losing, given the loss in revenue for that property. I'm wondering what more the district can do, either directly with this task force, with the government, and if nothing else, to inform the public of what's going on and what we can do, because we all need to work full together to do something about this issue. I received an email today from Bob Lecola, who's the town supervisor in Fishville, responding to me, saying that they are not going to budge on there's something that we were hoping to get called a pilot payment in lieu of taxes, where tax organizations kick in in acknowledgement of what they're taking away from the community. We're not going to get that from them. So if you, I also, I have heard that this task force has contacted someone in the administration looking for a monetary amount of what we stand to lose, that they have that information to work with, so I'm wondering if you've received that contact? If so, what the plan is? And do you have a monetary amount that we, the public, can know so that we can move forward in form? Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached the end of the list. Was there anyone that wished to speak that didn't have the opportunity to sign up?
Well, Anthony Tseng, taxpayer, father, community leader. I have nine questions, so just, and I'll make them, make them quick, but just strive for more engagement here. One, quite a few board meetings ago, Dr. Walkley offered to, offered data that supports it, over twenty transfers to Mr. White. As per eight NYCR eighty-four, the Board of Education, the Board of Education shall have the right to access personal records of employees of the district, subject to procedures here and so forth. So has that been done yet? Two, can you tell us how many of those over the twenty transfers were voluntary or requested? Three, can you tell us how many of those over twenty transfers were based on deficiencies? Four, can you tell us how many of those over twenty transfers were based on data and strengths? Those are the three areas that I got picked up from some of the workshops. Maybe more. Five, can we build a policy that sets up the process for how community organizations can be more involved in extracurricular activities? As you may suspect, children and youth who attend after-school programs do better in school, are safer and less likely to go and get in trouble in the hours after the end of school, enhance child's academic achievements, and less likely to drop out of school. You have two policies out there that I can maybe finagle. Policy thirty-one twenty-one, which is relations of community and business organizations, and policy thirty-one fifty, which is school volunteers. But I don't necessarily see them that it would include after-school activities. Just as a side note, you know, I am the union president in my own local, so I speak labor. If this is a union issue, I would be more than happy to lend my knowledge and work with the, work within cooperation with the VTA to make that happen. Six, can we start revising the DESIP? Seven, can we work on a more open process on revising DESIP to include more parents, include but not limited to a town hall, styles of the station of suggestions, and a third-day public comment period with a development of response to comments document? Eight, can we post written information on the STEM program that the school is in the process of instituting? Nine, are there any funds that go unused because of vacancies, supplies that go unpurchased, et cetera? Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, I didn't get to sign up for the book. Rebecca Corales, I'm a parent and a taxpayer. I have two questions tonight. One has to do with test refusals. It's a follow-up question from last time. And the second one is regarding the Public Complaints Policy fourteen-hundred. The last Board of Education meeting, I asked about the test refusals. Last year, the Beacon City School District practiced a procedure that required students to individually verbally refuse their teachers on the high-stakes testing days, whether or not their parents had written a refusal letter. I'm very concerned about this practice as a parent, to have these students put in that position on testing days. I asked about if that refusal policy or practice would be changing this year in light of Governor Cuomo's statements recently that in the end, the testing decision is up to the parents. The answer that I was given was by Dr. Walkley is that we have no policy, we are following the law. My question is, if in fact we are one of the very few school districts following the law in this manner, then my question is, what if any punitive consequences or warnings have been given to districts that have not practiced this method? Do you know of any school districts that have been reprimanded or warned in any way as a result of them not following this particular interpretation of the law? Those are my questions for that. And then on public complaints, I hate the word complaints. It implies that the public really doesn't have, you know, valid questions or concerns and it's just kind of whining up here, but I don't like that word complaints. But my question is specifically, I'm concerned about the wording in paragraph three, within a reasonable period of time. I believe that this is very ambiguous. It should be changed to a more defined period of time, sixty?
Days, thirty.
Thirty days. Something more defined, I think, would be more appropriate for the policy. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I snuck in late and I didn't have time to sign up. Nicole Meyer, parent, two children at the district. Dr. Walkley, in February, you stated that one of your goals was for the Beacon City School District was to, quote, "move us closer to a culture of care and respect." Personally, my children are in the elementary school and that school as sergeant has achieved this goal, in my opinion. The teachers and administrators at sergeant foster a positive relationship with the parents and with the teachers in an environment where the children thrive. Dr. Walkley, what have you done personally to bring this district closer to this goal? As stated by Mr. Burns in a speech that was approved by the VTA, many teachers are not feeling respected. Do you plan to improve the relationship you currently have with many of the teachers in the district and if so, how? Do you plan on doing that? And also, at a forum where we discussed increasing communication, it was suggested that Dr. Walkley visit schools and teachers informally to build stronger relationships with teachers in the community. How many times have you visited the individual schools and in what capacity? Thank you.
Okay, if that's all the questions, we'll try to answer them.
The first speaker was Mr. Burns.
As stated by Mr. Burns in a speech that was approved by the BTA, many teachers are not feeling respected. Do you plan to improve the relationship you currently have with many of the teachers in the district? And if so, how? Do you plan on doing that? And also, at a forum where we discussed increasing communication, it was suggested that Dr. Walkley visit schools and teachers informally to build stronger relationships with teachers in the community. How many times have you visited the individual schools and in what capacity? Thank you.
Okay, if that's all the questions, we'll try to answer them.
Uh, the first speaker was Mr. Burns. Mr. Burns made some statements that, um, I don't know if I agree with. He said that teachers were moved for a lack of performance. And I never said teachers were moved for a lack of performance. I've never said that. So I don't know who's making that judgment about teachers being moved for a lack of a performance. Um, after, soon after the transfers were made, there was an SMOA that was created by the, um, Executive Committee of the BTA about how future people would be informed. I have met with Mr. Burns and we have started conversations about how to work together and collaborate better. Not all of the moves were involuntary. Um, I don't know where Mr. Burns got his information about the lack of input from principals. But I did meet with the principals. Um, I believe, um, three times with all principals and then maybe four times with some principals. Sometimes that was a conversation on the phone. I don't know about midnight, a midnight date. I don't know what that meant. I didn't have a meeting at midnight. And so I didn't see any other questions there. Bob Atwell was the second speaker. A, um, in this district, we have the deputy superintendent who does residency, and she listens to, um, information about residency. It is in my job description that if there is a concern about residency and placement of students, then they may, um, parents may appeal. And I have worked with plenty of parents. Sometimes those appeals are granted and sometimes they are not. Um, information that supports an appeal. Some very important information comes when parents bring, um, information from experts in different fields, and they write letters of support. Also, information comes to the table when parents actually attend meetings, of which they're invited to attend, and state their cases. If they don't attend the meeting, they can't state their case. I do have, within my job responsibility, the ability to place a student in, um, a school and agree or disagree with a decision that has been made. The board does not approve those placements, um, and there was not a board approval of any, it does not approve, um, placements of students. The, um, other information is not school-related information. Um, I will again repeat that there is not a refusal policy, um, that there is a law about test refusals. It is in regulation. There is a committee that I am, um, putting together with principals, and I have asked, um, PTOs, PTAs, et cetera, to nominate two representatives to, to talk about, um, test refusals for this year. And hopefully, from what Mrs. Kellogg stated, the state will be rethinking, um, that information as well. I need to apologize. I did draft a response to you, um, of the, um, but if I, those responses go through my secretary, so I will, in fact, I really apologize. I don't know what happened, but my response to you was, at the time, we had not paid the membership dues. We have paid the membership dues, and if you go online, I believe that you will see my signature there. Not all of the superintendents from across the state, um, also had been members at that time, and, um, the organization, which is NISCUS, has encouraged other superintendents to sign, um, to something as well. So they are, um, superintendents are still signing that particular document. Mr. Zoff, the question was, will you be at the meeting with the?
I'll respond to my board comments.
Okay, all right. The, I believe the district, now I'm not sure, but I believe the district that was, um, visited or there was a discussion about coming off the, um, the focus list, is a very small school district. As a matter of fact, their whole school district, I believe, has less children than in our elementary schools. So it's a very, very small district. It's hard to compare a large city district to a small city school district. Um, the band teacher, we had retirements this year, and we had hoped that we did not have to use that spot, that position. We were hoping that we didn't have to replace it with a teacher, but that we could have, um, an additional music teacher. The band teacher is still at the elementary school, but is assigned just to one school. Does not travel across schools, because there is a need for a little more FTE for that to happen. So the model that is being used, um, this year is the same model that was decided upon last year before I came. In the, um, in the connection between the policies, at the last policy meeting, we did talk about that, about not connecting the two policies, um, by number, because when changes are made, it's hard to go back and find them all. So, um, and just so you know, um, it's a semantical term when we read a policy. You actually don't read it out loud, but it's placed on the agenda. So others can maybe speak about that at their turn. Anne Marie, would you like to talk about textbooks?
Yes. So, AP, there was, um, a little bit of timing issue with AP, um, US textbooks, and as far as I understand from the content coordinator, the high school, they've all been ordered. On the AP bio is the same thing. There was some confusion on the ordering of that. I do have the order on my desk. They were purchased, uh, put through as a purchase order, and they are being ordered. Um, the financial management textbooks, I'm not aware of, um, so I will follow up with the high school principal, um, tomorrow. I don't know anything about, uh, those textbooks, but, um, the other two were taken care of within the last week.
The literacy books at the elementary, I'm not sure. They may be related, I don't know if they're related to the new, um, oh, it's the middle school. Still, though, I don't know if they're related to the new books we just purchased. So, again, if there are not enough books, if, um, people would let us know, then we certainly can take care of that. Um, it's information that can go to Anne Marie, or if it's related to the literacy, then, Mrs. Kellogg, if, if people would let either one know, then they can be ordered.
Dr. Walkley, an important part of textbooks is that we receive the direct reimbursement for textbooks, so that's never an issue in ordering them. It's just a matter of us knowing in central office to purchase them.
In terms of scheduling, it is the principal's job to schedule, and, um, we are working with the high school on some of the items that were mentioned. The mentors weren't appointed earlier because the mentor coordinator was advertised. That's an administrative position. It was advertised early on, and no administrator, um, decided to apply for that particular position. When, um, new administrators came on board, we re-advertised those positions, and an administrator has applied and been appointed as the mentor coordinator, and I believe the mentors are on the addendum, um, this evening. I do not see parents as a threat. As a matter of fact, I've been meeting with parents. There was a meeting this evening with Clarice and some other parents that was canceled because of the board meeting. Um, and we will be rescheduling that meeting, and I've met with other peoples, people as well, other parents as well. So when parents schedule meetings, I do meet with them. I do have the forums. Parents are invited to the forums. The forums are open, um, forums. There is one forum that, um, that does have a dedication of what's going to happen at the forum. It's an extra one, because basically there are two forums per month. One is in the morning for people who have the time in the morning to come. They are at 6:45 to 7:45 at the district office. The second forum each month, or whatever order they come in, um, is at the high school in the cafeteria. That is in the evening, and that is, um, seven to eight o'clock. We will, um, post it on the web. It has been mentioned at the board meeting. It is in the board minutes as well. The foreign language, uh, there were no cuts to foreign language. Cuts to foreign language has happened prior to my arrival. There were no additional foreign language cuts, and I don't believe that I, there were, um, the previous year, um, last year, the staffing was in place when I came in. I, um, I did not make any additional music cuts. There may have been a cut last year. Someone asked me about the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room, I explained to them is, I already spoke about that at the forum, the night that I mentioned that. And, uh, I spoke exactly about what that was, and it was about the mixed messages that I received, um, from the parents and community about being here or not being here. As Mrs. Kellogg, I believe she mentioned, um, we are part of a professional learning community process with the state. And the state, because we are a part of this pilot that the state is doing, there was a few districts last year, more districts this year. And part of the purpose of that, uh, professional learning community is not only learning from other, um, other districts, but, um, the state is allowing, um, districts that participate in that program to develop a three-year DCP. So, um, we are going to begin the process of learning more about the professional learning communities coming up next week, I believe. We will be spending two days in Albany with a team of people, um, and so we will not be adjusting the DCP until we begin the process.
So is the long council going to be?
No, but she has a forum scheduled.
My suggestion is we keep with policy.
I'm sorry?
You know, my suggestion is we keep with our current policy as far as fallout from the voting.
Just like Louise said earlier, once you get the policy.
Uh, the question was around, and maybe you want to handle this one. The question was around, um, hiring, the hiring process and probably the, quote, normal process.
Well, we had, we had talked about that. Um, I believe that was Carla's question, was why we avoided that procedure, and, and I had mapped out, you know, the processes we had followed in times past for other superintendents, and, um, you know, we've tried many different ways of searching for a superintendent prior to this hiring. And I can't speak for the entire board, but maybe they'll use their board comments to, to share some of their thoughts, but my thought, um, in this regard, we had somebody, Dr. Walkley had been with us not just in the interim position she was in at the time that she became our superintendent. She had been with us two years prior to that. She'd made multiple trips back to Beacon, um, to help us in our time of need. And believe me, we were in a time of need. To think that we're in that place now, certainly we are. We're, we're in a time where we, to heal is probably the word that I would use. I feel that we're in a place that we need to heal. But we've been in that place before, and each time, Dr. Walkley had helped us, and she had helped me in the interim, even when she wasn't an employee of Beacon City School District, so that I could better understand, um, my role as a new board president. I've been a member of the Board of Education for nine years. This is my third year as the president of the board. So when I first became a board president, Dr. Walkley was here as an interim. So, in my eyes, Dr. Walkley had done a great job for us prior. In our last superintendent search, we probably had, Mike, how many would you say? Viable candidates? Five? Five. You know, picking, not everybody's running to Beacon, right? Look at the salary and compare it to other districts. Look at, um, what we're working with here is far different. People are not running to come to Beacon. We, we put, as in the New York Times, we've put, um, on OLAS, we've used the New York State Superintendent's website and their newspaper. We've used many different sources, but even after using all of those sources, and to put in the Times expending all of that money, five. Five viable candidates. That's in past searches. So, we had a candidate here that was doing a great job for us. She was guiding us, and I still believe, putting us on the path to better days. And for me, it made better sense to go with what we knew than to be in that ballgame again. So, again, the board doesn't speak during this time. This is usually for the president or the superintendent, but if they'd like to use their board comments, they can share their thoughts as well.
The next question was around the waterfront project.
So there were a couple of different questions, and I hope I wrote down all of the questions that you asked, um, so bear with me. First about the tax levy, and that question has come up several times for several different people. The tax levy is calculated as part of the budget process. It is done before the actual tax bills are generated. So the amount is calculated based on the tax cap and the levy is calculated. It's then spread out amongst the taxpayers. So if there's a reduction in assessments over the taxpayers, that means everybody will pay a little bit more if the assessments are too lower. So the school district doesn't actually lose money on a tax exemption. It means that the taxpayers within the district pay a little bit more to, to offset the amount of the exemption. I think that we were speaking of the Rivercrest apartment complex. It was given a 44% exemption, um, March 1st of this year, which affected this year's school taxes. That process is done through the town of Fishville, um, and the assessor reviews an exemption, or application that has to be submitted by March 1st. So it is the town's idea that, uh, the Jehovah Witnesses will go back and ask for 100% exemption coming this March 1st, um, but they don't, um, we won't know that until the application is put through. The apartments, as far as we know, are being used to house members that are not receiving pay for their work, um, in, um, in building a Kingdom Hall in Orange County. The other part of the question was the, um, the task, the task force. So, um, I am the administrator that spoke to, um, Richard Canarelli. He also spoke at either the last board meeting or the board meeting before that, um, and he is doing, uh, a task force, um, to try to get the state legislator to change the rules on tax exemption. So, um, the assessor and the people in the town of Fishville are bound by state law. So at this point, there's really not too much that they can do. So at this point, there's really not too much that they can do unless the state law changes. So he had asked for the board's help in getting it out into the taxpayers' hands to try to help them change the way that was. And then just finally, the Jehovah's did purchase another property recently that is on the waterfront. But we do not know what the use of that property will be. And we would have to wait until they file a tax exemption. We have to wait.
The next speaker was Anthony. You had nine questions. I want to start with community involvement in after-school activities. And we do have a contract that does allow the BTA to have first refusal of after-school activities. And we do have language around that, and we do honor that. There are other organizations in this area that do offer after-school activities that some of our students do participate in. Again, we're not revising the DCP. We will do it as we work with the state and based on their expectations for us and how they advise us in going forward. I will ask Mr. Soltis to put some information on the STEM project. Amory, there was a question around supplies not purchased. At this time of the year, we're still purchasing. But what if at the end of the year, we have money left in codes for supplies? What happens?
I don't want to speak specifically to supplies, but if there's money that is not expended, that is budgeted for, it does go into fund balance. And I think at the next meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about that. We are presently being audited by the external auditors to get financial statements. So it's just a process. So it's not just materials and supplies. It's any budget code that has money available that we did not expend, that we have budgeted for.
Okay. The first couple of questions, but I didn't get them down very, very well. I will be glad to meet with you. There he is. I was looking over here. At the end of the meeting, or we can set up a meeting to take care of those questions. I did talk about test refusals, that there is a committee. We are hoping to hear something different from the state as well. And as Mrs. Kellogg already said, we will be in Albany next weekend. And actually, all throughout this year, with the many activities that we're involved in with the state. The question was around, do, what are the consequences from not having followed the law? Mrs. Kellogg answered that for this year only. They are removing the 95% tested requirement. So it appears as though there are no consequences right now.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Walkley, if I could just clarify, I want to get to my notes a little bit more of this for this year. The information that they were, when they spoke about was current year, in February going forward for this year.
For this year, but not last year. So, okay, so we still have the issue of last year.
Right.
I believe what they are doing is exactly what you said. They are looking at two years of data instead of one.
Absolutely.
And again, this is something that may change. As you can see, the state is changing, changing as we speak, so to say. I did read something that said that they would look at two years of data and make a prediction of what the students might have scored if they had only assessed them. That's, I heard something about that. But I don't know how they're going to do that, but I think the jury's still out on that. Care and respect. All of our schools are working on care and respect. And what have I done? I applied to this district because I do care about the district. As I have said before, I have been retired. I came out of retirement. And as was pointed out last board meeting, I signed a contract that has a no-fault clause in it. I doubt that any future superintendent may sign a contract like that. That's because I'm not doing, I'm at an end of a career, not the beginning of a career. And I work many, many hours. And everybody works lots of hours. But I know the soccer people see me coming out while they're still, while they're leaving from the soccer practice. And sometimes I've been there as late as 10 o'clock. And I have to admit, one night, I was at the office until 12 o'clock. And that was Friday night. I put in many hours, and I also work on the weekends. You all put in lots of hours as well. That's because I care. This district has a lot of gaps, and I work hard. And have I been in the schools as much as I wanted? No, I have not. But I will be. There was a lot of paperwork, et cetera, that needed to be caught up in the district. There were a lot of things to do, a lot of systems to put in place. There's still a lot of work to do. This is a district that can keep somebody busy for an awful long time. Mrs. Kellogg and I work very hard to provide some of the best staff development in the country. We are fortunate to have some of the people coming. And some people have questioned that. But I think professionals deserve to be treated as professionals. And when you care about professionals, you provide them the very best you can. And we have grant money that is earmarked in certain ways. Sometimes that's hard to understand. Well, why didn't you take this money and do X with it? Why didn't we buy a new playground? Or why didn't we buy this or do that? And sometimes grant money is very specifically allocated for certain types of things. So for example, in Title I monies, you can use some Title I monies for professional development. But the one professional development that they support is PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies. And so if you're not doing that, then you can't use that money in that way. And you can't earmark it in another way or for another activity, because it has to be spent in certain ways. Because we are a focus district, we have set aside funds, and those funds must be spent in certain ways. So there are some parameters under which we spend money. So when you respect people, you provide them the best that you can. We've tried to have materials and let teachers know that they should let us know what materials they need. We have let them know that there, if there's textbooks that they need, there is money that we receive for that in the past. I don't, I think that people, for whatever reason, didn't request textbooks. So I'm not aware of teachers who have been turned away yet. They may have been. I don't do all the budgeting. Amory, can you speak to that?
As far as textbooks are concerned?
Textbooks or materials, requests from teachers for supplies.
Well, the teachers, the process is the teachers must request it from the building principal, and it must be approved, and then it comes over to the business office. But we do have money available in the budget. None of the budget codes are overspent at this point, that we couldn't order supplies or textbooks for teachers.
So I think you respect people in that way by responding to their requests. So those are some of the things that I have done. I also care very deeply about our students. And I have said this to some parents, and I will repeat it again if it bears repeating, that I will hold our students and our teachers against any student and teacher in any other district. I believe that we have great potential here. And I believe that the results we are getting are not reflective of the potential that exists here. And so another way that you care and respect about people is that you challenge them. You challenge them. You don't say, oh, well, oh, well, they can't do it. I believe we can. And I respect them greatly. That's why I have high expectations. Is there anything you'd like to add?
That leads your superintendent's report.
Okay. In the superintendent's report, another way that I respect not only the teachers, but the community as well, is by listening and bringing in programs, special programming. So I just wanted to do a little update. Kenya, I know you like the Grow Your Own program. And we had another meeting with the Grow Your Own program. Ashley Jackson, right now, is our point person at the high school. And we met with Dr. Sullivan and, oh, gosh, I forgot her name. I'm sorry, I forgot her name, but the fellow that they hired at Marist College. And we have started the process. Ms. Jackson is going to be recruiting for ninth and 10th grade students who are interested in this particular program. We will then have the fellow come over and meet with Ms. Jackson and the interested students to explain the program. The program is not an established program. One of the things that Marist College did, based upon the interest in particular that this district has had in being part of two of their other programs, two of their other programs in which they support high school students, we are not eligible for, because we do not have the correct demographic that fits within their grant money. So this is another program that they are offering for districts like Beacon, who cannot be a part of the other programs, not from a lack of interest, but from a lack of rules that exist to get in those programs. As I had mentioned, the idea is that we run this activity for students, working with the college. The students have opportunities to visit the college, see what it's like, college life is like, also to talk with teachers, to talk with some of the college professors as well, to find out more about the kind of work that you have to do to become a teacher. And if the students stay within the program and they meet the certain guidelines and requirements and grade requirements, there will be a competitive, it'll be competitive, there will be three to five scholarships that allow students to come to Marist College in their teacher education program at half price. So it sounds like a great opportunity for us. And we are partnering, partnering with Marist in some other ways as well. We are partnering with the NAACP with a special program called Lifted Parents. This program is going to be piloted at South Avenue. And we are collaborating, but it's their program. And what they do is offer parent training and trying to engage parents from some of the lesser represented parent groups. So their training will be some of the things that they have done in the past in other districts. They've done training around learning styles and how to help your child at home, meet their learning style at home. They've done how to speak to people at school, et cetera. And their programs generally are in both English and Spanish. And so that's a group that's going to begin at South Avenue. And they're called chapters. They start chapters. And hoping, and assuming that that's going to be a success, then there may be other chapters that they start. But again, there are guidelines about which schools that they choose. And South happens to fit in those guidelines. I've also had a couple of conversations with a couple of different groups that I'm now going to bring together into one meeting about what I'm calling now Career Symposium. And that Career Symposium will be planned by community members and school members. The idea is to have it, and different groups have different ideas. Some would like to have it just for middle school. Some would like to have it just for high school. Some are thinking maybe eighth and ninth graders. So that's something that the committee can figure out together. But the idea is to use some local people to come in, maybe have a panel, a discussion panel, and then have breakout groups where students can learn from our local business people about starting your own business, how to get started, et cetera. So that could be very exciting. We've talked about, different groups talk about different days. Maybe it's Saturday, maybe it's after school. We're not really sure. The group will decide. We have been collaborating with the Beacon Police. We already have a good working relationship as well with the Fishkill Police. And our Beacon Police would like to have more of a presence in developing relationships with students and schools. So they would like to be present, for example, for bus drills. And maybe for the early release, go-home early day, in-shelter drill day that we do, they would like to be present. And so you may see the police coming to, we've invited them to all of our, you know, parent groups. And we said, come to the concerts. You can meet lots of parents there, but to get to know not only you, but your students On the calendar, on the printed calendar, the one-page printed calendar, for the shortened days, there is a schedule that was printed on the bottom that said, subject to slight changes. We are making slight changes in the busing. We bus to, I forget how many schools.
I don't even want to guess.
I don't.
Forty-six, at least.
I was going to say, right around 50. If you ever get a chance to visit the bus garage, there's this huge bulletin board of the 50 schools that we bus to. So when we first put the schedule together, which was in the summer, Ron is doing a little bit of adjustment to that schedule. So instead of starting release at 11:30, it'll be a little bit later. So we'll get that schedule printed on, in our, we'll robo-call it, and we will also The parent portal, I just want to remind the elementary parents, the parent portal letters and invitations to, with your password, will be going out this week. On the 16th, they are slated to go out. And our mail is slow. I don't know if you know, but it goes to Albany, or goes somewhere else first and then comes back. So we're finding it's taking quite a few days to get letters out to parents. So we think around the 20th or the 23rd. By then, you should definitely have your parent portal letter. And we are offering a parent portal night that we will advertise a little bit more in November, on November 12th, if you would like some guided practice in getting into the parent portal. But if you follow the directions and you feel comfortable doing that, you should be able to get in the parent portal right away. I want to remind people for the forums, if you could please RSVP, so that we can make sure that we have the right-sized room for people who would like to attend those. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any board comments?
I do. So first, I just wanted to do a little update on the Policy Committee. I'm the chairperson of the Policy Committee. Mrs. Gaston and Mrs. Patchen sit on the committee with me, as well as Mrs. Townsend. So anyone who wasn't at last, our last meeting, the committee met in September, and we reviewed three policies. One was policy 1230. Last meeting, the committee brought a draft of that policy to the board, which the board did not pass. So there were eight board members present. Four voted no, four voted... So there were eight board members present, four voted no, four voted yes. So the policy will go back to the Policy Committee. And we have a meeting coming up, which I'll talk about at the end, and we will, you know, kind of go somewhat back to the joint board with that policy. So I would encourage people to share their thoughts, as people have been doing prior to that meeting. Tonight, we have two policies that we will be, we have listed as our second read, that we will be approving. The first one is policy 1400, the policy on public complaint, which is different than policy 1230, which is public comment. So this policy really is if you are asking questions at the board meeting and going through the chain of command in the school building and through the district, and you are still not feeling that your concerns are being met, then you would follow this policy, which is why it's called a complaint policy. Someone mentioned wanting to know about maybe having a number of days in the policy. And that actually is something that came up at our meeting. Based on discussion, it seemed that that would be something that would go into regulation. So we're still learning from the attorney what the difference is between a regulation and a policy. And he does give us guidance at our meetings with wording that may go in the policy. And there are certain complaints that may be able to be answered in a few days, and then there may be some that take longer. So when the regulation is written, the Policy Committee has asked the superintendent to include that type of information in the regulation, which does become part of the policy book and is online, if people are interested, once those policies are approved. The other policy tonight is policy 5460, which is child abuse in a domestic setting. And we needed to change that policy based on a change in the law that started on July 1st with regard to who was mandated to report suspected cases of child abuse. One other item from the Policy Committee that I wanted to ask about was, we had talked about, and I want to say this was in August, we were in the bigger room at the district office, about a workshop for the board on Robert Tools of Order, as well as a question-and-answer session for the board, and perhaps the community about the process, not so much the items that we're discussing, but the process that's being followed. So I know we talked about that, but I would love to see that happen at some point in a workshop. I'm not really sure the process for having that happen. I know, Mike, you had said at the policy meeting that was something that the attorney could do, but that the board needed to decide. So how do we go about deciding that?
I think there's already been some discussions concerning it. It's just a question of scheduling it now. Between Melissa and Dr. Walkley, there's been discussion about the desire to have it. We're just trying to find the appropriate agenda to put it on.
So, but at a board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then we will have a meeting on Tuesday, October 20th, which is next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the district office. And we will be discussing policy 1230, the policy on public comment. And at this point, that is the only item we have on our agenda, although we do have a few policies, brief policies, that we would like to add, and those will be posted on the website if people want to review them in advance. And I don't know if the right time to say this is now or during the agenda, but can we hold policy 1400 now? We read it once, so can we just hold it and then add it on again when we get to the point where we're going to approve policy 1230, Mike? So there's not a conflict of having one approved that's referred to?
I thought they weren't intertwined anymore.
I don't recall there being anything in the policy concerning a requirement that the two readings be two consecutive readings, two consecutive board meetings. So the board can do whatever it wants with that.
Okay. So that was it about policy. And then I had a few other comments.
Do we have concern about 1400 or?
Yeah, I thought they weren't intertwined anymore.
Well, we're referring it.
Can we talk about that? We can pull it and talk about it then, correct?
Yeah. Well, that's what I was saying. Can we just do it at that time? Or do, you know, would I do it now? So I'll just do it later. I wrote it down. So one comment, I was actually going to bring up a topic, but I believe Mr. Vidovic brought it up, that I will be attending Thursday's meeting for the Stern Group at Overlook Point, so I will bring back any information that I gather. They are meeting at 7:00 PM, so if you need to join me, I'll be there. This Sunday, I'm attending a workshop as a part of the New York State School Board Convention. I think some, I know, Melissa, I believe you're going as well, about social media and ways to kind of reach out to the community through social media. So hopefully, we'll get some good information from there for hopefully our relations committee. So I wanted to also comment that I just, actually, I came late because I was at a Recreation Department meeting, and I think it was Mr. Sang who talked about the community after-school programs. And I don't know if people are aware, but right now, the Recreation Department is developing a master plan, a five-year plan for the community. So they will be having forums soon to reach out to groups. So I think in addition to the school, that might be another place to reach out as well. This is a new plan. Now that the Rec Department has building, they're able to branch out, and they're hoping to offer more programs. So they would like the community's input on that. One question, I heard someone say, I know you said there's a forum on the 19th, but that you were going to be in Albany, but you'll be back for four. Okay. That's what, I heard someone ask that, and I just wanted to make sure. I've double-booked myself my new date.
I am double.
No, that's triple-booked. So I had one other comment, and it's in response to Mrs. Springer. I care about children. That's why I'm on the school board. I work, I drive home an hour, and sometimes I come straight here from work. And I do care about children, and I try to speak my mind at the meetings. And I do call my city councilperson very often. I actually have his number as one of my favorites when I have concerns. But I will say, as a board member, I have very few people who reach out to me personally to bring me issues that bother them. And I know that city council people get phone calls all the time. So what I would suggest to anyone who wants to reach me, feel free to forward an email to whoever it is at the district office that would like to share information. I know other board members feel the same way. I'm happy to hear from people. But I do call my councilperson and ask questions if I have a question. So I do care, and I try to share information that I hear from the community. Sometimes I read it on the Internet, sometimes I hear it in the coffee shops, sometimes I hear it from friends, and sometimes actually people who are here tonight who have reached out to me and asked me questions. Sometimes it's in public. Sometimes you ask questions behind the scenes, and you get responses, and then they're shared publicly, either through Dr. Walkley's comments or through other information that comes out from the board. So I just wanted to let you know, Mrs. Springer, that I do care about children. Thank you.
And that would be Kelly.
Kelly.
Kelly is our board. Any other comments?
Sure. Am I going next? Do you want to go next? Go ahead. Okay. Last Thursday, last Thursday, two Thursdays ago, oh, two Thursdays ago, I attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting. The main part of the meeting was we went over all of the major resolutions that are going to be brought up at the New York State School Board Association's annual convention, discussing, we actually discussed that with one of the representatives who runs on the committee that decides which resolutions will make it to vote. I'm known special as far as if the question was asked, "Am I going?" There's no reason for me to go any differently than any other, you know, I'm not, you know, I go to the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, this is the New York State School Board Association meeting, so any one of the board members can go, and I believe a few are going. However, I don't think anybody's going to the business session where they actually vote on the resolutions. It's a three-day event, and the business session, I think, is during the work week when people have to work. So unless you're willing to take off from work, people don't go. So as I said, at the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, we did discuss the resolutions. And if we were designating somebody to go and to vote on those resolutions, then in that case, they would typically, the way that's done is they brought up in front of the board. The board discusses the resolutions and what the majority of the board wants to do with the resolution, whether they want to vote for it or against it. These resolutions, the New York State School Board Association basically is, they're an association that supports the school boards from an educational standpoint and from an advocacy standpoint. So these resolutions are, basically, it's where these school boards vote to tell the state association how they want, how the school boards want us to, want them to advocate for changes. That's pretty much what the point of those are. There's nothing to do with actual changes in state law or anything. It's just, it's having the school association representing the school boards and discussing with the legislatures and the State Education Department as to what changes we would like to say. I also wanted to kind of talk about, a question that came up about us not following procedures for hiring a superintendent. I'm not sure where that premise came from. There is no set procedures for hiring a superintendent. It's the responsibility of the school board to hire a superintendent, but it's up to them to decide what procedures they want to follow. We've followed many different procedures in the past. I've been on the board for a long time, and I've gone through a lot of different hirings of the superintendent. We've done it different ways at different times. We've done it where we've hired from within the district, we've done it where we've hired from without the district, we've done it where the board itself has been responsible for the hiring process. So we've gone out and we've advertised and gotten the candidates and weeded them down. We've done it where we've had BOCs do the initial hiring and weeding out the candidates and bringing it down to select few. Where we've done it where we've had a committee made up of administrators, teachers, parents, board members who've been involved in the interview process. We've done it where we've hired our attorneys to do the initial process and weeded down for us. So there's many different ways of doing it, and they're all valid ways of looking for a superintendent. So there is, so there is no one way that has to be followed. So to say that we didn't follow the procedure is sort of a fallacious statement, because there is no one procedure. And like I said, we've tried it many times in many different ways in the past. I think, and re-answered, I just wanted to clarify, the question came up about the tax cap versus the issues where you have a large piece of property that is being taken off the tax roll. It doesn't affect our budget, in other words, our budget, we can still, we still, to stay within the tax cap and just say, "This is how much money we have to collect." The issue really becomes is that the number of people who have to pay for that gets reduced. And so it just means that what happens is if some property comes off the tax roll, it just means all of us then have to pick up basically the slack that's caused by somebody coming off the tax roll. So it doesn't have a negative effect on the budget of the school district. It has a negative effect on all the taxpayers, which of course, in the long run, could have a negative effect on our budget, just because, of course, none of us are happy about our taxes going up. And especially, people sometimes don't understand when they say, "Oh, there's a tax cap." That means my particular taxes shouldn't go up by more than 2%. And that's not really true. It's the overall amount of money we're collecting that can't go up by more than a certain amount. So it's still, it's still something that myself, I think everybody else on the board is concerned about, you know, it's whether it's even fair to have it fall on the rest of us to pick up when some properties are taken off. But it's, you know, you don't have to be concerned about it as far as, it doesn't mean less money for the school district. And let's see. And I think the only thing I just want to say that, it does concern me when we have people from the public coming up and basically making comments to the superintendent about her not being caring or questioning her caring. Not that, you know, I mean, I'm sure that those are your opinions and they're valid opinions. I just want to let you know that, you know, I've been working with the superintendent for a long time, both when she was an assistant superintendent, as well as when she's a superintendent. And there's a lot of things that I see in my capacity on the school board that, of course, you don't see. And I just want to say that, you know, in my opinion, the superintendent is extremely hardworking, is very dedicated, and really does care about the outcome of education for our children. So that's, that's my opinion, based on all the things that I've seen.
All right. Excuse me. So my first comment goes, I didn't have any comments. I was going to try and stay quiet tonight, but then there was a lot of comments, so I felt like I have to answer or try and make sense of it. So I know that Mrs. Hewer talked about scheduling, and Dr. Walkley, you said that that is the principal's job to do the schedule, but we did hire a consultant for it. And I just want to know, is it true that the classes are so disproportionate for that? Or?
Well, what I can tell you is I'm working with Dr. Seabirdy on the schedule.
Isn't, can I just?
I don't, I don't have the data in front of me.
But isn't a lot of the AP classes balanced out by students that request late arrival and early dismissal? So that could possibly account for the imbalance if that's, I mean, we're talking about a small cross-section of like one class of one subject. So my guess is, those are probably seniors that either have requested early release or late arrival, and so that could cause an imbalance. It may not be a scheduling glitch or, you know, an oversight. It may just be that's what the students wanted.
There, yes, it could be that, or there could be other things. I don't have the data in front of me, so I don't want to speak to it.
But there was a consultant that helped them with it. It's not that he was, it was, I know it's his job, and this is a question that we had when we approved the consultant agreement, was that, we know it's his responsibility, but yet we were hiring a consultant, but there was a consultant involved with it as well.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the other one, I believe it was Miss Hewer again, was, is it true that we did rename a music class because of the teacher certification? Or, I haven't heard any of this, so this was new to me.
I don't think it was because of the certification.
I believe, I believe the statement actually was, was because they didn't have the materials.
Music class renamed, and I thought she said because of certification.
And again, I'm not sure what level they're talking about. I am aware of, at the high school, in the second semester, we are having a pilot program. So, and when the teacher, it's a, each, it's a one semester class, and each semester, it's a little different, the program that's being offered. And the teacher came thinking that they were going to start the program that's actually going to start the second semester. So I don't know if that's what they're talking about. Again, I don't have the data in front of me, so I can't really speak to it.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I haven't heard it before. And I'm hearing a lot about the foreign language component, and I just want to know that, you know, foreign language is usually based on student interest and so forth. But I think that we could look out outside the box and maybe look at some distance learning opportunities as well with some foreign language. Like, I know my district is doing distance learning with Mandarin because there was a desire for it. And, you know, they started that component where, yeah, we couldn't hire a new teacher, but yet there was an opportunity with the technology that's available today. And I know it was available when I was in high school as well, but I'm sure it's gotten better, to do distance learning, and that could be an option for some of the foreign languages if it's not some, where we have someone teaching it.
Yes, and I would love to have a Mandarin program here, because I think that, and there's lots of other choices of language as well, but it certainly is a very popular world language. Again, I think that the BTA will weigh in on that, because we are fully subscribed in our language program. So to bring in another program may result in the reduction of a current teacher. May. Don't know, don't have the data in front of me.
What, can I just, while we're on foreign language, Dr. Walkley, I know you weren't here, but I was getting some questions myself about French. Melissa and Bill, could you speak to the history of how and why and when French got phased out for those that are new to the community?
It was some time ago, I wonder if Georgia knows.
Georgia, I think that's, sorry. Answer's a question.
I believe it was a few superintendents ago, it was under the direction of Dr. Banlow here in the district, where French was recommended to be discontinued from the district and reduced, and caused some classes that we did have in, for say, in the middle school, to have a large number of students that were in that class, causing many students to drop out of the class because they felt like they weren't receiving the appropriate instruction. And I believe Dr. Walkley was the assistant superintendent for curriculum at the time. And I do remember receiving a phone call from her, not as the assistant superintendent, well, not calling me as a board member, but calling me as a parent, because my son was one of the students that wanted to drop out of the class because it was too noisy. It was, there was no support and such, so.
Just clarification, I did not work with Mr. Ban, Dr. Banlow.
But, right, not under Banlow, but some of the repercussions of that came in when you were here as an interim, and Mr. Hilberg was here as an interim superintendent, just to clarify, correct? But it was based on some of those decisions, and some of those decisions were probably pres-
presented to us not in a way that we were probably understanding of what the repercussions were going to be under that direction.
So my question was, if we could keep it in mind to maybe do just, even if the BTA, you know, isn't on board yet with it, but do some surveys with some students to see if they would be interested in other foreign language opportunities where it doesn't mean if we have that information, we know which direction to go in or not go in. So I would just like to keep that in mind because I know it's a long process and has to get started, you know, rather soon. Technology grant update? Anything?
Nothing more than what I had put in your board packet. So we're still in the process. We have the technology planned to go forward, so we're just waiting to apply and put the paperwork through. So we're moving, but not.
Are they putting the paperwork through for what they want to do? Is that going to be known to the public where direction they're going in before they apply? Or is this just applying for, to say, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing?
Dr. Walkley's asked Tim Fescheen, our technology director, to, as we get closer to the, to getting all of the rules and regs that we need to come to the board and present to the board and to the public of what the plan is going to be. So that should come soon.
So Ms. Springer, you hit a nerve, I guess, or you brought up a point, and I feel like I have to talk about the hiring procedure that was back in, I don't know when it was by now, February. So I did, I did state that there wasn't, I didn't feel that there was a process that I was used to. They've been on the board longer than I have and they had used many different processes. But I did have concerns, being a new board member, that we didn't go through a search process for an interim superintendent and then we were appointing a permanent superintendent without going through and doing a search. And it's not anything against Dr. Walkley. It was more about the process and following a process to see what is out there. It was new process to me, being a new board member, I think. Dr. Doorwood left that meeting or so forth. It was a switch over. So it was about the time when the new board member started, that Dr. Walkley started his internship. So I just want to say, I did express it. You could go back to the video and watch my concerns if you don't need, I don't need to reiterate them. And the other thing was, another community member pointed out that there was a BTA, the former BTA president was doing an internship. I just wanted to know if it was true because I didn't know, made aware, and I know that we typically don't get made aware when there is an internship going on, but if there was, I would like to know because it's just too high profile.
Generally, we don't talk about personnel.
But I think you know that.
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I think you know that we don't discuss personnel and we don't discuss any internships.
It was an internship.
We don't discuss any internships, but I think you know that.
Anthony, do you have any other comments?
No, thank you.
So first, I just want to thank Meredith for being very diligent and trying to ensure that all of the principals are on board with ensuring that we can utilize the TOSA and do better at that. I think three years ago, before I got on the board, there were some concerns about, you know, the Calico Ball and, you know, the use of money and the use of the TOSA. So I'm just glad that you remain diligent in your journey to make sure that we get it. So I must give you that. Anyone that has watched any of the videos or seen me here knows that I'm very diligent about trying to connect the dots with situations and try to be, have an understanding of where people are trying to go. I always ask when I answer Facebook questions that we be respectful of one another, that we hear what the other person has to say and then we answer. I think that there is, in my opinion, a lack of that respect happening here at these board meetings, and I don't think that it's fair. I think that we all want to be heard here. We all are adults. And I think that we should be mindful of the other person, whether or not we agree or disagree with them. To snicker, to laugh, to point fingers is inappropriate. I think that I have three children and I taught them to be respectful even in the face of people who are being disrespectful. I think that the goal for everyone in this room, and you could correct me if I am wrong, is to care for the children that are in our district. I don't have kids in kindergarten. I don't have kids in elementary, but I care. I care about the welfare of all these children. I think these people that sit before you care. And so, yes, there are issues, there are concerns. I'm glad that all of you are here today because when I was sitting where you was three years ago, I was frustrated that my children, my daughter who graduated 2012, had to actually deal with five principals in one school year, one turn of trying to graduate in four years. So there are issues here. Do we continue to beat the issues? Do we continue to be disrespectful and think we're being respectful? Or do we present the issues with possible solutions and we move forward? There is a lot of manpower in this room. There's a lot of knowledge in this room and we can go far if we just leave the sarcasm at the door. These are my opinions. I don't speak for the board. I speak solely for myself. I want to be here. I want to be here for these children. I want to be here for my kids. And when they leave, when he leaves here, because he is the last one to go, I want to know that what I've done here was good. I don't think any of us are sitting here for the bad. So I just ask for respectful dialogue. That's all I ask for. I ask that you be heard and we be heard as well. You may not agree with Dr. Walkley at this point, but we should be respectful. Okay? So that's, that's my opinion on that. Ms. Springer, your assumption, you stated that, you know, we didn't care, I'm going to speak only for myself, that is incorrect. I sat here and again, I was here three years ago. I watched things happen. When Dr. Walkley walked in this door, I felt like she was a diamond in the rough. She addressed issues and goals in this district that were unaddressed for several years. So, you know, no one's walking in this door saying, look at all the good that happened. Look what happened yesterday. Look at the difference. I'm not facing this same problem that I faced last year. No one's doing that. And you know what? We don't, we don't really need that to happen. It would be nice because then it would balance out like the problems and actually the successes in the district. So to say out with those that are sitting here, I don't know if that's personal towards me, but I sit amongst them. And so I'm going to say that I don't want to be ousted because you don't have a full picture of what my beliefs are based on why I decided that Dr. Walkley should be voted in. I was here. I sat here alone. These seats are nice with people in there, but there was only three seats taken most of the time. So I just want us to really try to build a relationship that is just respectful and mindful of each other so that this way we can come up with a common goal. And I think that goal is all of our children. That's what I think. And if I'm wrong, correct me. Like Christine said, if you have something to say to me and you think that it can make the difference, I'm here to listen. But I'm going to say that my only requirement is that we be respectful to each other. That's all I demand is respect because I know that you, everyone sitting here, demands the same thing. There's a, I guess, I'm going to do my homework on the TOSA's because I think that there is, you know, there are districts that are already established and teachers on special assignment. I think that with Beacon's, you know, focused district situation, there are reasons that these things are in place. Is there a special reason why there's such a highlight on the TOSA? I don't know. When I looked at Facebook, I could say that, yes, it is. But again, I'm going to say that we're all people. We're all parents and we all can be faced with the same situation, so we have to be mindful. If we want clarification on what a TOSA is and what a TOSA does, let's be very specific to get what a TOSA is and what a TOSA does and leave the bodies in the building out of it and just focus on the issue. So that's the, if the issues aren't met, then we can deal with those, not the people behind the TOSA positions. And I think that we wanted to have a meet and greet, which is something that I wanted to do, so that the community can get to know the board. I think that you don't know me. I think that you don't know what I do and why I'm here. And I don't know all of you. I know some of you. And the people that I do know, they're very passionate about, you know, what I do and why I'm doing it. And so, you know, if we could just meet on that, agree on that, vote on that, whatever that is, because I'm willing to take the challenge. I don't think that parents should continue to just guess at stuff. I think that the guessing at the stuff is causing some, some level of, you know, uncomfortability that's causing pun, for lack of a better word, to be thrown around. And I think I personally just want the pun to stop. I want the point, the answer, resolution. That's, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Talk to follow Kenya. However, I just want to touch upon some comments that she made as well, is I am in full agreement of the meet and greet. I think we had also talked about something, about maybe revising the part of our page on the website to include maybe some more information about ourselves. I don't mind being contacted. I'm not on Facebook. I have no plans to go on Facebook. So if you need to get a hold of me, it would be through, I guess, our district clerk right now, but I have no problems receiving emails. I am not always contacted for information, you know, with issues or concerns by members of the community. There are times where I am up and down Main Street and there are some people that stop me and there are some people that do not, so I don't always hear some of the concerns, you know, the way other people may receive the concerns. There have been gaps in this district for a very long time. I'm going in my seventh year on the board and I am in support of Dr. Walkley because some of the strategies are making a difference for our students here in the district. When I started on the board, there was a lot of questions. There was a lot of concerns. There was, we had education committee meetings, which we did away with. However, it was almost like we were repeating the same thing at every education committee. We were asking for information. Dr. Walkley was not obviously here at that time, but some of the information for the response to intervention, for the academic intervention services, those are all areas that I am well aware of in my profession. So, you know, in knowing what I do, I advocate for general ed students as well as special ed students. So I'm glad we're taking a proactive approach and that we're trying to make changes in the district. Change is difficult and I'm sorry that transfers are still such a big issue here and are causing so much tension. However, it's something that sometimes is a necessity. As far as the superintendent searches, I was on two of them and we did do them several different ways. And in working with Dr. Walkley as the interim assistant for curriculum on several occasions, I was in support in having her lead our district. So if we can do something about going back to the meet and greet, if we can do something, I know that Melissa was having us speak a little bit. I feel me just coming and giving you like a little bio right here is not really having you get to know me, but just kind of giving you like maybe my resume. So I am for doing something like that, maybe even doing something on our website as well under the Board of Education section. I'm all for that.
Thanks, Georgia. Anyone else have any other comments?
So I just want to kind of echo some of the things that Kenya and Georgia said. I mean, I think that people are somehow under the impression that we're just up here because we have nothing else to do on a Monday night. And we all care about kids. Almost every one of us has, every one of us has a kid or in the district or recently graduated or a grandchild in the district. So we all are stakeholders in this. We all care. We've all given up countless, countless Monday nights, other hours, other meetings. And it's really disheartening that some of you would even feel the need to say that. But anyway, so, yes, I also opted to not do a full-blown search. I, like Georgia, was a part of one search directly, one search indirectly. I, like Kenya, sat in the audience for a year to a year and a half before I got involved. I got the seat because, oh, by the way, the year that this election happened, no one wanted to run. There was no candidate for the seat. I really didn't want the seat, to be perfectly honest. So I felt at the time very strongly about it. I still do. I fully support Dr. Walkley. I think she's by far and away the best candidate that we've had in the three searches that I know about. And I feel really badly that we're treating her so badly. Thank you.
Well, I think I've shared my thoughts before, but I think I echo a lot of, you know, certainly the feeling that Tracy's showing right now. We wouldn't be here if we didn't care for children. You know, I think I've said many times, I have three children, one a graduate of Beacon High School, one a senior in Beacon High School, and an eighth grader in Ramona Middle School. Right? I came through Glenham. It was a sad day when my youngest graduated from Glenham because 13 years I've had a kid in that building. Now I live in Glenham and I go past that street and I think, I have no reason to turn on that road. Why is that? That's a sad thing. But many times I've said, my children don't need me to sit in this seat, right? I am their advocate. I will be their advocate whether I sit here or I sit out there. But there are many children in this district. They need an advocate. They need somebody that's going to stand up and speak for them. They need somebody that cares about the fact that, you know, they don't have someone at home. I had a kid once tell me many moons ago, because my daughter's in her fifth year of college, so we're talking, she was in middle school and she was teasing a kid that, my daughter played beacon hoops and this kid used to play against her. And we used to end up giving him a ride home because nobody came to see this kid play. And she was teasing him about grades. And he says, well, it's not really fair. You know, we don't all get help. And now I'm driving the car and I'm looking, I was like, dude, what are you saying? Are you saying I do her homework better? And his answer was, it sure helps if someone asks you if you have some. That year, I ran for the Board of Education. If you want to question why I sit here, he's the reason I sit here. And response to the meet and greet. At the last meeting, Christine proposed putting together a public relations committee. And while I didn't state it on that night because of many other things going on, I would like to put that committee together. And I need to know what board members would like to take part. We need three members of the Board of Education plus myself to create a committee. All right, we have four. I'm sorry.
What'd she say?
I didn't hear what she said.
I said Anthony was last. He went last.
I'll be an alternate though. It is. I'll be an alternate.
Okay. All right, so we're going to have Christine, Kenya, Anthony, and myself, and then Tracy as an alternate.
I did come up with a possible agenda for a first meeting, so if you'd like me to share that next time, I will.
Yes. I think for sake of time, let's do that next time.
Next time.
But I think, you know, just to piggyback on that, you know, many board members have said you can reach out to us, whether it be, you know, through emails to Kelly that she can then forward to us, stop us in the street, whatever the case may be. There have been members of this room that I've sat and had coffee with and just shared ideas and I'm open to that with anyone. But I think this public relations committee can do many things. I know Christine has many ideas. But at the end of the day, we want to build, you know, I said this before, we moved to Beacon because this is where I wanted to raise my kids, right? When I sent my daughter to Boston College and my husband walked through the campus and he said, oh, she's going to love it here. I said, well, what makes you think that? And he says, it looks like Beacon, right? It's diverse. It was an, she goes to Northeastern, which is an open urban campus. He says, it's so much like Beacon. She's going to fall right in. And she did. She's had the time of her life and she'll graduate in May. But I think we want that, we want to see the relationship between the community and this board. It's very difficult to do in this setting, but I think this committee will help that.
I was supposed to say something for the Beacon High School PT SO.
Okay, go ahead.
But my passion, I hope no one receives my message as being angry because I am not angry, but I am passionate about what I do. The Beacon High School PT SO, without any help of mine, does a wonderful job for the high school. And as the kids get to high school, there's less parent involvement, of course, but they run session stands at West Point. If you are a parent, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, they need your hands. They may not need them for several hours. They need them for one or two hours. They need it for teacher appreciation breakfast.
hours, they need them for one or two hours, they need it for teacher appreciation breakfast, um, the senior breakfast, the honest recognition ice cream, social, they need a lot of scoopers. Um, and, um, they ask that you contact, um, Kim Rose Lennon, um, at gmail dot com, and, um, Christine Alandis is also there, but I didn't get her email address, so I'm just asking the parents to please, um, support them, because they support our high school students. Thank you.
Kenya, I always tell my children, I'm not yelling, it's just a passion I have for that. So, I couldn't see, I couldn't see your face, because I was sitting back, but I felt the passion behind you, and I didn't want it to be misconstrued.
I'm glad you're meeting.
Okay. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent, can I motion something if I might pull something off of it?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve consent agenda items 10.02 through 10.09.
Comments or questions?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, 10.02, 10.04 C and D, and 10.07.
What one was it due?
Sorry, wait for me to leave. Yes, everybody's leaving. 10.02, 10.04 C and D, and 10.07.
Okay, all those in favor of consent agenda, less those items?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 10 points, may I have a motion for 10.02?
Motion for 10.02 is for the new agenda. Second.
Okay, so I have the question.
Comments or questions?
So my question is, these minutes, um, talk about the policy 1230. So it was a very spirited discussion that we had, where a lot of views were expressed, but the minutes don't have anything, it just says that a discussion ensued, or I, I don't know what the term was, so I'm wondering, I mean...
Does it require that, has to go with the detail on it?
Right, but on other pieces, we go into a lot of detail about different discussions, I mean, could we list the items that were discussed, the points of contention, so if someone were to look through the minutes and wanted to track why this policy wasn't being, why it's being sent back to committee, like, could we dot point, I mean, I don't know what people think, I'm not trying to start a precedent, but this is a policy that, you know, we haven't sent back a committee to policy, um, a policy to the committee, you know, in a very long time, and so I think it warrants being stated in the, the minutes. That's just my opinion.
Mike, did she make the recommendation to amend them, and based on that, and then we could, uh, vote on amending the minutes based on what Christine comes up with?
She could, I'm not sure that she's prepared to.
It sounds like more of a concern with the format of the minutes.
But I can tell you that Bill is right, as a matter of law, the only thing that's required to be in the minutes is the resolutions, uh, that were introduced and the vote of each board member on those, uh, resolutions.
But what I think Christine is asking, I don't mean to speak for you, is that you would like a little bit more detail on this particular one, just be so people know why they didn't go forth, and if the policy committee needed to look at a certain thing, it would be reflected in the minutes to know what to look for.
Right, because it says, Mrs. Thompson commented that she was not able to attend the policy committee meeting due to work. So if we're not looking for a certain level of detail, I'm just, I'm just wondering. Well, I'm sure you were really informed, but, um, it was basically the participation section as to how... No, I was here, I was here, I'm saying for the minutes. Right.
I don't think people so much read the minutes, they watch the video. But I...
I guess I would suggest, if, if you, we want to give more guidance to our board clerk as to what detail levels would be in the minutes, that we, that should be, that should be discussed at, at, maybe at our board retreat, as, as to what, what level of detail we want.
But I don't think she's asking for it for all the time, I think she's asking for it for this particular incident. Do you have language that you would want to propose, Christine, to put in there?
Well, I, I think we could just dot point, I mean, in the board comments, we, we list a, a lot of information, and this is an item that didn't pass, and is now going through this process that we really haven't gone through in a long time, and I think if we're going to say, the board discussed the merits of this policy, including, you know, the, the responses to public comment and timing of that, as well as, um, the wording of, just sort of a summary like I give at the beginning about what we're, what we changed in the policy, just so it's stated. If everybody doesn't agree, then I can go, you know, whatever, I'm just bringing it up as a question about the, the minutes.
My comment for it is, to this particular item, I, I don't, I'm going to say, it doesn't matter much to me if it's changed or not, but I think that a board member should have the right to ask for them to be amended if they feel strongly enough about it, and if, if so, maybe come with what they would like to adjust it to, so the other board members could then agree to add that in or not.
Is that how it works, Mike?
Yes. Sorry.
That's, that's a way that you can do it, sure.
Okay.
And just for the record, also, Mrs. Gadsden was also not at the policy meeting. It just says Mrs. Thompson, so I didn't know if we needed to correct that.
Well, I mean, I mean, that, that can be corrected.
And the corrected minutes can come at the next meeting. Okay, so motion to approve, all right, so we already have the motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. And a motion for 10.04 C.
Motion to approve 10.4C.
Second.
My question was, um, I see that Glenham and South Avenue and Sargent are listed as having yearbook advisors and student council advisors approved, and my question was about Forreston, and did I miss that being approved and asked, or are they, do they not have a student council and a yearbook committee?
Kelly, do you know if it was, if Forreston approved, um, yearbook in the past? So we certainly can ask, um, Mr. Wright, and...
There is a yearbook.
Or yearbook.
There is, no, she's saying there is a yearbook.
Okay, so if, perhaps I missed it, but I just noticed the, the three schools and not the fourth school, so I was just wondering if that school had those items.
What happens is they don't always collaborate and ask at the same time, so...
Okay, so all those in favor for 10.1?
Don't worry about me, I got it.
All right, all those in favor, 10.04C.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, motion carried. You abstained?
I did.
May I have a motion for 10.04D?
Motion to approve 10.04D.
Second. Comments or questions?
So my question was, um, because someone in the community asked me what a clean data trainer was, and I am aware of what a clean data trainer is because of my line of work, but I'm wondering if maybe you could briefly explain it for the community member who asked me.
Um, it's, it's a term we came up with, so I'm glad you know what it is.
Well, I, I, we don't call it the same thing.
Right, right, right. Um, there is more and more requirements for teachers to enter data into our student information system, and, um, it, it is tedious work sometimes, it's, it's work that has to be checked, et cetera. So, um, we, as, as the state has more and more requirements for data, the rules keep changing. So we have, um, clean data curriculum developers, when there is a new type of data that needs to be entered, or people need a refresher to remember, some data is only entered once a year and you have to go through a certain procedure. Then they put together some training, and we train people in the different buildings, they turn KIA to their colleagues, so that the information that goes into the system is clean or is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Have a motion for 10.07.
Motion to approve 10.07.
Second. Comments or questions?
So, Amory and I checked, unless I'm missing something, 1400 does not reference, what was it, the 1230?
1230.
1230 does not point at 1400, and 1400 does not point to 1230, they're not interconnected in any way that we define.
And that was the same reason that I, I pulled it, was to, to bring that up as well, that it would be a public policy. One of the things we've been trying to do with the policy is not have policies reference other policies, even though that makes some of them longer.
Is this a new policy, or is this a policy that's been revised? Because I was looking, and it goes like, uh, 13, 9, and then it goes 14, 10, and so I didn't know, is this a new policy?
This is a, this is actually renumbering of a policy, we already have this policy, it's, there's a few changes which I went over, um, at the last meeting, I can repeat them, I just have to look back and check exactly what they were, um, but it's just being renumbered, because we have the new policy service, and so they have a different set of numbers, so as we go through the process, we're renumbering the policy. So it's not new, it's just been slightly amended, and since we're amending it now, not really in order, we're just going to change the number, so we don't have to go back and open it just to renumber it.
So the, the meat and potatoes of this policy has been in place before, it was just another number?
Yeah, there's a couple of little, um, of, of changes, I'm just looking back at my notes to, to remind myself exactly what they were.
I think they were very minor, like...
Yeah, so one had to do with...
You would see the public complaints inside, it's right in front of your eyes.
Christine, the other question I had about it was, can we just define what reasonable period is? Like, I, I, I'm not asking for the policy to do it, but to have an open discussion about what is a reasonable period? What did you decide?
Didn't they already have that?
We brought that up at, actually, I think I, I might have mentioned in my board comments, if I didn't, I meant to, um, that we had talked about the idea about how many days would be reasonable, and, and some of the guidance we've been getting, um, from Mike, as we've done the policies, is that the policies are general guidelines and the regulation then is specific. So if you receive a complaint about certain topics, those complaints might be addressed in three or four days, whereas, and it wouldn't be reasonable to respond to those within 90 days, and we didn't want that limit put on it. Whereas other items may need a longer amount of time to be reviewed, depending on the number of people that need to be involved. Um, so that was the reasoning for not having a number of days in there, um, and, and the guidance that Mike gave us is that the board can let the superintendent know that we would like the regulation to state a, a little more specific of a guideline as to how long it would take for, um, a response. So that was the guidance that we had, had talked about, so I don't know, you know, if you're looking for something more specific, um, we can certainly talk about it. I don't know what, people didn't bring up concerns at the last, um, read, so if people have things they want to talk about...
I can't believe I was done the other one, 1230. That's why I think so.
So, did, I mean, did people have thoughts and comments?
No, the only thing I can say is that because we're going back on 1230, I think some of our language may have been different in the revised policy, which, you know, we have to go back to the initial policy, so that's the only thing, we're not acting off of the, the one that we had for our first reading, or that we ended up pulling and did not do a first read. Is that correct?
So, and, and honestly, I actually wrote a note, you know, maybe, that's why I asked before, should we just pull this policy and, and kind of keep the two of them together since they go together, and just send them both back to committee, and so I, I was also going back and forth on that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I mean, I, I think it's probably okay to pull it, because our current 1230 does have words copied from this one, and, and, and there's slight conflict. I don't know if you want to say, pull it back to committee, I mean, it only needs to go back to committee if, if there's not enough support on the board and change is need to be made, but if it's, if, if there's enough support in the board for the way it is, we can just pull it, because we don't want to introduce a conflict, but, and, and just, and once 1230 comes back, then just bring this back as well.
But I think we, I think we do need to look at the wording, so that would be a change of this, because if we're changing wording in the, in 1230, we may need to...
Well, the point, we weren't going to change the wording in 1230, we were just referencing this policy.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it was sent back due to some of the revisions that we had done, so I'm thinking that when we go back to our policy committee meeting next week, that we're needing to, like, make some major revisions.
In 1230.
In 1230, which may impact...
And it may impact 1400, so I, my vote would be to, to hold the policy.
Okay, so we have a motion, all those in favor?
The motion is one, so we can pull it off.
The motion is to approve 10.07, if we don't approve it, then it goes back, right?
No.
Right?
You, you can either do that, or you can entertain a motion to table this policy.
So motion to table this policy.
Second.
Can we just, a little more specific, table till 1230 is complete?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion for the addendum.
Motion to approve addendum to instructional personnel list.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Comments or questions?